Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a work session of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. We have several items to address in the work session, and then, once we're completed, we're going to go right into our public hearings unless somebody needs a break. So I would ask for a motion on the minutes from last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? The only thing I would note is that Christine made a minor change in some portion of the minutes that I found when I reviewed them, but it was just completing a sentence, basically, about requesting public participation, and there wasn't any. So we're good to go. We have a motion to approve the minutes in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to the table application.
Okay. Table application, that is for the fence, 2406 Broncroft Boulevard. On July 27th, I want to just thank Andy and Mark Valentine. They went out there, and they did meet with the property owner and any other neighbors that were there, and they did stake out the area approximately where the fence would be and reported back that there wouldn't be any site issues or any sightline problems with that. If there was a three-foot fence, if there was a five-foot fence, that there would be no issues either way with that, which was good to hear. And so with that, with that issue being taken away, I guess we can jump into seeker here, and I'll say that this is a type-two action, not subject to further review.
All right. Andres has made a motion to declare this a type-two action under seeker.
Second.
Mike has seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Now to the application. I think there's everything, sounds like it's squared away now, based on the town engineer coming back to us with the information we needed. One change that I did hear was that rather than being five foot back from the property, I did hear the applicant was now requesting zero-foot setback from the edge of the property line. I guess there's a couple of things I look at, is in terms of maintenance of the property. If you're at zero-foot setback, how do you maintain a property, or how do you maintain a fence from the roadway? That's one concern that I had there. And then the other was, how do we guarantee where that setback is? And so I guess, you know, since if we go ahead with this, I would want to condition it on a survey as well, because with it being adjacent to, you know, a town or a state road, actually, we'd want to make sure that they were on their property if they're going to do a zero setback.
I guess another issue is, you know, was it being as advertised for a five-foot setback? Do we have to do anything notice-wise?
I don't think it was advertised. It was just advertised as area variance. I think, I'll leave it to Pete maybe to tell us, but...
Yeah, it was advertised as a taller fence than allowed.
Okay. So really, there's no setback. It could be zero. I think they just presented it as five foot. And those are the only notes that I had there for differences. But with that, I will make a motion to approve this, or the fence that's now going to be five foot versus the allowed three foot. Want to have a couple of conditions. I know during public comments there, the applicant did agree to Mrs. Lee requesting a fence, you know, in terms of where it was placed along the edge there, and they did say that they would tuck it back around the corner in that one area. So I just want to make sure that that's noted. And I believe they were going to, they spoke to removing some trees and brush and things like that that were in the right-of-way, so I want to make sure that that's also accounted for with that approval. I don't think there's going to be any additional, you know, issues in terms of if it was three foot high, five foot, in terms of the character of the neighborhood. If there was a fence there, I don't think we'd see a difference for that. And none of the neighbors actually brought that as a concern in terms of the character of the neighborhood, it being like a detrimental thing. While it is substantial, at one and a half times of what's allowed, based on what the engineer was saying, and when Andy was out there, where they staked it out, it wasn't a sightline issue that we brought up before. And so I guess with that, those are my areas.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with conditions, as cited by Andres, including the applicant obtaining a survey to set the exact site of the fence. Any other? Do we have a second on that?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's on the lot line now. Correct.
Correct. Yeah.
It will be up to the lot line, maybe in some areas along the road, but there are due to trees and things like that, I don't think it will be on the property line.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you identify yourself? The speaker, please, just...
Christopher Legon, property owner at 2406 Broncroft Boulevard.
Thanks. Okay. So I'm sorry. Go ahead and repeat what you just said.
So due to trees and existing, I suppose, impairments along the property line, our fence might touch the property line in some areas, but it's probably not going to be right on the property line almost anywhere. But we do have an engineer scheduled that stayed out, probably mentioning...
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll second it, the motion to approve with those conditions. Any further discussion or comment? No? Okay. Well, we've done the seeker, and now we have a motion to approve with conditions. And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. All right, folks, and I just want to like to echo Andres's comments about the good work here by the town staff going out there, the neighbors, and the applicants all working together to come up with a resolution that I think everyone's content with, if not ecstatic with. So, and good job to the board members as well. So, way to go. All right. Thanks, folks. Good luck. And now we have another item. If we're ready, are we ready to address that? The application for rehearing? Is the applicant in person on that?
I don't think he's joining us, no.
He's not joining us?
No.
Okay. Well, Andy, may I ask you to sort of set the stage and state the, what the request is?
Sure. Bear with me here.
I have his letter up, if you want me to kind of go through it.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, so in essence, we had an application from Jason...
G.
G.
Kaczewski.
That was for a building larger than allowed and setback variance requests as well. Ultimately, the board denied the request after tabling it on one occasion to give the applicant an opportunity to perhaps submit a further justification and maybe a different plans. After that opportunity was given and the applicant did submit additional material, the board voted and voted no, in sum and substance, because I think, generally speaking, the board members felt that the building was too large for that particular location. I think that's a fair statement. In any event, subsequent to that, the applicant came in to speak with Andy and has now put together a revised plan with a reduced building being requested and a reduced variance, square footage-wise, and then also a reduced variance request.
That is correct, yes.
And it submitted the details of the quote-unquote "new" application to the board, asking the board to allow him to come in, resubmit the application sooner than the typical one year which is allowed after a denial. Right? Did I miss anything, anyone? Is that a fair summary?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've had applications like this before, in the sense of people coming in and asking for a new application submission sooner than the one year. I imagine we've denied it occasionally, but there have been times we've granted it as well. So I'm looking at this application, and the basis for granting it would have to be that the new proposed application is substantially different than the one that had previously been submitted. While the application is the same in the sense of it's a request for a larger building and one that's closer than setback rules allow, the degree to which he has changed the numbers, in my mind, consistent with our prior practice and prior rulings, is enough to justify allowing him to come in. So I would make a motion to allow him to come back in with this application, but of course, we need a second and we need discussion on that, or an opportunity for discussion.
I second it.
Any discussion from anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple things.
Yeah, of course.
I'm looking at the language of the section. It says...
Yeah.
Provided new evidence is submitted, or conditions have significantly changed. All right? It doesn't say that it's a substantially different application. It says, "conditions have significantly changed." Seems to imply that that doesn't mean changed voluntarily by the applicant, but that something's happened to affect the property, which is no longer the same as it was, and it had a material impact on the initial application. On the other hand, I mean, that's pretty technical. I think that the applicant probably did not realize that that was the case. We certainly gave him an opportunity by adjourning it for a month to do just what he's doing. We basically said, "What's the least that you can live with?", and he came back and said exactly what my application was. So, I don't know. I'm just...
Yeah.
I wish the language was different in the statute, I guess, is what I'm...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying in that. I just, I wish I could sit here with a list of similar requests that we've had in the past, and if anybody has a better memory than me, feel free to use it. But I do think that we've given the language that Mike cites...
Yeah.
...a pretty broad application, and when the only thing has changed in the past is the degree of the request that we've allowed somebody to come back in. So I don't dispute your interpretation of the language. I just think our past history would allow us to grant this, and that's the basis, that's the basis for my motion.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if, was the one for Fanta's, up there, for the, for their shop, for their pizza place there, where their offices were going to be? Did we deny that, and then they came back substantially smaller? Or was that one that just, they just came back a lot smaller? That's the first thing that comes to mind that came back.
Which one, Andres?
The office for Salvatore's.
Salvatore's main office there on Empire? I don't recall that.
I know they came back a lot smaller when they came back, but I couldn't remember if we had tabled that.
I think they did that voluntarily.
Okay. But to me, I think substantially, this has changed, because it's gone from 45% larger than allowed down to 6% larger than allowed. I mean, that's quite a bit of a difference there, to go from, really from, what, 12, from 1,200 square feet to 875 square feet. So it's much smaller footprint. The setbacks changed quite a bit already as well. You know, he's doubling the amount that he was going to be from the property line. So I guess in my mind, you know, there's a lot of change.
Any other comments? All right. Well, so we have a motion to accept it and allow the reapplication, and did we get a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Marie seconded. All right. I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, we'll see Jason G. sometime in the future. Is that deadline passed?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then it will be sometime in the future. Okay. All right. Again, great, great work and analysis. Guess it would have been nice to have that on the table date, but such is life. Okay. So we have, by my count, seven applications. I know there was a question of whether somebody would be able to participate tonight. I saw that somewhere, and...
We got her. She's here.
She's here. Fantastic.
She's in.
So we have seven applications. Let's run through them quickly to see if we have any questions for clarification purposes. First one is the Hogan Road application. Anybody have any questions for clarification there?
No.
No. Second is Cambray Drive. Any need for clarification? No. Third is 2513 Penn Field Road. All right. Most of these are pretty...
Straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Four is 2509 Broncroft, conditional use. Five is Bay Road Expansion. All right. Six is Five Mile Line Road, nothing. And then seven is Route 250 there with the signs. Okay. We don't have any need to talk about that, so let me start with my usual, COVID-usual notice that, "Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the New York State Open Meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcasted live on the Town of Penn Field's website." Is that a word, "broadcasted"? Or is it "broadcast"?
Broadcast.
Broadcast. So I read the script in front of me, but I should have known better. Any event, it's being broadcast live on the Town of Penn Field's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Penn Field's Government Access Channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you would like to address the board on any public hearing matter, folks, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each application after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with board questions and concerns. You can participate two ways. One is by calling 585-340-8771, or by electronic submission, also at the website, www.pennfield.org. I'll try to remember, once the application is done and prior to board members asking questions, to remind folks out there of the, their opportunity to chime in and the ways that they can do it. Once again, thank you for your patience in these several months, and also great work by staff here at the Access Channel, as well as the Planning and Zoning Department staff. They've been doing yeoman's work ever since this pandemic struck, allowing us to continue to do our job. So, again, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. We're about to start the public hearings. We've already had the work session. And the public hearings, we will ask the applicant to start by giving us name and address, and then explaining to the board why the relief requested should be granted. After the applicant is done, hopefully I'll remind people of their opportunity to chime in, but then the board will have questions of the applicant. And then, when the board questions are done, we will invite members of the public to give their comments and the manners that I've described by phone and via access. After the public hearings are adjourned, we may or may not take a brief recess, depending on how long the night goes. We have a fairly long agenda tonight. But in any event, at that point, we will have deliberations... Oh, actually, no. I apologize. I'm reverting to the old way. After each application is done, we will go right into deliberations after having an opportunity for public comment. Usually, we wait till the end of all the applications and then take a break and deliberate. But since we've been doing this remotely, we go right into the deliberations, so folks don't have to stay online until the end of the night. So, in any event, even with this pandemic, we think the town does a great job of notifying people of the zoning board agenda and of what applications will be heard, especially people that live near those sites that will be considered. The town does it by sending out postcards to folks that live within a certain distance of the property, by having the applicant post a sign that we've all seen around town, saying that this property is subject to an application before the town, by putting the agenda and information about the applications on its website, and by actually posting the agenda here at the town hall. We think that the town does a good job, and we often get comments from neighbors and other concerned citizens, which we appreciate and we think helps us do our job better. So thank you, and hopefully we'll have some comments tonight. That being said, I'd ask everybody to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Great. Thanks, everyone, and if I haven't forgotten everything, we can move right into the first application. Please.
Diane J. Allen, 1448 Hogan Road, Webster, New York, 14580, requests an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger storage building than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1448 Hogan Road. The property is owned by Diane J. Allen and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 111.01-1-19, application number 20Z-0020.
Is the applicant ready?
Diane, you can join in now. There we go.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
You can go ahead and give us your name and address for the record, and then go right into your reasoning for the request and why you think the board should grant it.
My name's Diane J. Allen. I'm at 1448 Hogan Road, Webster, and we're requesting a 10-foot setback for a larger building that's permitted on my property.
We have received your written application and a lot of written material, but before we get into board questions, I'll just remind folks that you can call in with comments, 340-8771, or submit them via the website, www.pennfield.org. All right. Let's open it up to questions from the board.
Ms. Allen, I guess the main questions I have are centered around the size of the variances that you're requesting. So let's start with the size of the building. You're looking for essentially permission to build a building that's two times larger than is permissible by code. Why do you need something so big?
Well, for a few different things. For storage, for hobbies, and for man cave.
Or workshop.
Workshop.
Okay. Can you make it smaller?
We could probably make it a little smaller. It's too large of a building to be permitted.
How small would you be willing to build it?
We could do 20 by 24. Does that sound reasonable?
So that's still a pretty significant variance.
16 by 24.
Feels like an option.
Looking at the driveway, if you're looking at the driveway and looking in there, the driveway edge is 16 foot, and that's right on the, right there, yes, right there, okay? And the reason why I want 24 is because I put it in there with the 20 foot over here, and then come around there on this side, going towards the old shed, which is my big other. And the 34 is basically because my tools and my woodworking equipment will score just that part right there.
So let's talk about the position of it, then, because you're also asking for a 40-foot variance where the setback is supposed to be 50 foot.
No, we're asking for a 10-foot variance. 10?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a variance of 10 feet, 40 foot from, it says a variance of 40 foot from the 50-foot setback. Andy?
Yep. Diane, I believe you want to be 10 feet from the property line, correct?
Correct.
Yep. So that would be a 40-foot variance from the 50-foot requirement.
So you're supposed to be 50 foot, feet from the property line, and you're asking to be 10 feet, which is a 40-foot variance.
Correct.
So your property is wide enough to be able to put the building on the property and still comply with the code. So why are you looking for that variance?
Well, I have leach lines in my yard, for my septic system. I can't really build over that way onto the leach, leach lines.
Where are the leach lines?
They extend just about to the existing shed that is there right now. It's probably about two feet away from that.
To the north?
To the north, yes.
Oh, they've got them all over the place. It goes out from the back of the house, up this way, to the left and the right of the house, the side of the house, yeah.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but sir, could you give us your name and address for the record as well, please?
My name is Mark Wolcott, and I live in the same address.
Okay. Thanks.
So is there anywhere on the property that you would avoid those leach lines and still be within the code?
No, not really. No, not in place where there's trees, and then there's the leach line, the septic tank, and then there's, we have a dry well, there's all kinds of contractions around the yard.
So my other concern that I have is, we received a few different public comments, which appears to be on a form that was provided by you, and I'm not saying there's anything inherently wrong with that, but your notification to your neighbors said that this would abide, the structure that you're putting in would abide by any of the setbacks, which is not an accurate statement, because you're looking for a variance.
I think I must, what I must have meant on that thing, what I did, I mean, we can't, unless we can have this done, unless this is approved, obviously we can't have that, but if we did have it approved, it would have to be a 10-foot setback.
Well, it says this structure will abide by, abide with all setbacks.
Oh. I'm worried. Sorry, I'm worried.
So have you shown, actually shown, I guess it would be your neighbor at 1450 Hogan, which I think is directly in front of you, correct?
Yeah, both neighbors, yeah.
Have they come, have they come and actually seen where the structure is going to be?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And they did that before they signed these statements?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay. So you're willing to get it down as low as 16 by 20?
24.
16 by 24?
16 by 24.
24 length going back. 24 length going back.
By the way, I just want you to know, one of the reasons why you're being asked these questions is because we are required by law to grant the minimum variance that would get the job done, in other words. So, it's not just because we don't like you.
Well, I've never applied for a variance before in my life, so this is all new to me.
Totally understandable. So, for Matt to ask the question is a fair question, a question we often ask, especially when variance being requested are pretty substantial, relatively speaking. So, again, don't take it personal. We ask this, we ask this almost all the time.
Understandable, yeah?
I have no further questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
On materials and color?
Oh, yeah.
What materials would this be made out of, and what color would it be?
Well, we have, originally, we were going to do, have vinyl siding on it to match the house, and it'll either be vinyl siding, or it will be metal, steel, with a steel roof and, yeah, pretty much like that.
Okay, but the color?
Not those colors, but similar to the design.
But do you plan on having the colors match the house?
Yes.
The colors, oh, yes, yeah. Colors will match the house.
Same thing with roof?
Yes.
Yeah, will match my roof, too. I don't want it looking odd and out of place, especially.
Will there be any exterior lighting that will be installed?
Exterior lighting, you say?
Yes, exterior.
Uh, probably a little light outside of it, yes.
And where would that be located?
From the door.
Over the door?
Over the door, or the garage. Over the door.
I missed the distinction.
Yeah, the little side entry door, or the peak over the large, larger garage door, that, okay, either one of those two?
Probably, yeah.
All right. Single light shining down, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Not out.
Yes.
All right, so, any other questions?
No.
So, I just want to let you folks know, and give you an opportunity, because you have to live with your neighbors in the future. It seems like you have good relationships, and that's nice, and I'm glad you reached out to them. The language in the document you asked them to sign is incorrect, but you've also said that you've shown them where it's going to go.
Of course.
Yeah, and we believe that. I just want, I really don't want you to be put in a situation where your neighbors are like, well, jeez, if I had known that there was a setback from conversations with you, there was going to be a setback variance request, maybe I wouldn't have signed that letter. If you're comfortable, okay, and frankly, the public notice that went out did mention that there was a setback variance request, so, and they received those postcards and saw the notice and all that, but, so, I think we're okay with the notice that has been given, and they, I don't see any comments in yet, and I'm trying to stretch time a little bit, but I want, all that said, if you guys want to put this off for a month to make sure that, that's up to you. I think we're okay to vote on it tonight, but I don't want...
What do you mean by putting it off a month?
It would only be if you want to do it so you can have further conversation with your neighbors. It doesn't seem like any of us feel like it's necessary, but I, you know...
I think I'm good. We're good with that. We're a pretty close bunch of people back here, we're good friends, we're good neighbors, and, you know, I told them, too, don't be, if you said, if you chucked no to that, I'd have no problem with it. They're like, oh, my gosh, no problem.
Okay, and as I've said, we don't, I don't have any indication that we have any public comment via the phone or the web at this point, so.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
No, and again, we don't have any comment. I think we've given sufficient time for that. So, let's move, then, to the seeker.
So, I would make it a motion to declare this a type-two action, which requires no further action.
Second.
Okay, so on the seeker, we have a motion to declare it a type-two action, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, for the heart of the application, I would move to approve the application conditioned upon it being a 16-foot by 24-foot shed, and given the representations by the applicant that there's no other place to put it on the property, I have no problem with a 10-foot variance. It does not seem as though it would be an undesirable change to the character of the It does not appear that the benefit could be achieved by any other way. The 16-foot by 24-foot shed, the variance is much less substantial than the initial 20-by-30-foot shed, and again, while the 10-foot setback rather than the 50-foot setback is substantial, it does not appear that there's any other way or any other place to put it on the property. It does not appear to have an adverse impact or effect on the environmental conditions, and it is self-created, but I'm not putting too much weight into that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Andres seconds it. Any further discussion amongst the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks, bye.
All right, next application, please.
David Giramini, 26 Cambrey Drive, Fairport, New York, 14450, requests area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a storage shed with less side setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code, and less rear setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 26 Cambrey Drive. The property is owned by David and Jenny Giramini and is zoned RR-1-15, SBL number 140.01-4-134, application number 20Z-0021.
All right. Looks like we have the applicant ready to go, so go ahead and give us your name and address and speak your mind.
Excellent. Hi, my name is David Giramini. Address is 26 Cambrey, Fairport, 14450, and I am looking for an area variance to place a shed within standard square footage, the 192 square feet. I am looking to place it in the northwest corner, is that what I said? I'm trying to think now what the...
Southwest, I think you said.
Southwest. Southwest. Let me pull up the map. Basically, in the exact spot that I said I wanted to put it on the map, where is, all right, screen shot. There. The, yes, southwest, southwest corner of the lot. The reason why I am looking for the variance is I am not able to put it 10 by 10 off there. There is a tree. In my letter, I wrote it as a maple. I was incorrect in that, it is not a maple. I thought it was a maple. My father might tell me it's something else. I don't remember what it is. But there is also a tree back there as well, on the other side, so I can't really go anywhere else. I thought about going to the other side of the lot, but there is water that needs to drain over there. My property does slope down on that side, so I have moved some flagstone rocks that were there from previous owners, and allows water to not move more freely, and, yeah, and my lot narrows in the back substantially compared to the front, which makes it even harder to place it 10 by 10 off the property line to maintain the standard setback.
Thanks again for coming tonight. I have a few questions for you, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Okay, so can you describe the shed for me? What will it look like?
So, in the picture I submitted with the application, it'll look very similar to that, that's the plan at least. I have not contracted with any shed companies yet, because I didn't want to go through that process if it wasn't going to be approved, basically. And so, basically, it'll be a standard lofted barn look shed. I know it's a black and white picture, because I did not realize it could submit via email, which then you would have gotten a color company, but that is, I plan to do it in a natural stain color, so it'll either be, I don't mind if it's painted, so I want it to blend in as much as possible in the back there with the trees and the other tall grasses that are there. And the roof will also be a natural, it'll be a steel roof, but it'll be a natural color.
Okay. Are there any lights on the exterior?
Not currently planned, but possibly in the future.
And what kind of a foundation are you putting for that?
So, the initial plan is either gravel, like crushstone, or it will be sitting on pavers, and I'll put a footer underneath that, like drill out, or eight feet down over the footage that's needed to go down, and grab concrete in to make it more solid. I don't plan to put a concrete pad in. If in the future, if we sell the house, or a future owner says, hey, I don't want a shed, they can take it down and put dirt over the top of the concrete, but it's much easier than they can take up a concrete pad in the back corner.
Okay. What do your neighbors think of this? It can be seen by your rear, front, and both sides, right?
Yeah, so I've talked, I've spoken with Martin, or Marty, and Ann to the south, sorry, to the south, and that is their preferred location, in all honesty. It sits behind their shed, so they won't even see it.
Okay.
I spoke with the neighbors across the street, Nate and, uh, it was Nate, no, we just moved in last year, so, excuse me for that, but spoke with Nate, who was the one that had direct sightline of it. He said he'd rather have it there than the 10-foot offset, because then he would actually see it much more. It would be in much more visible view for him if I did 10-foot offset then in front of that tree, which would allow for 10-foot offset at that point, but it would be in the middle of the yard, and he's like, yeah, I'd rather have it.
So, he's happier because if you get the variance, that tree would stay and would camouflage, is what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Got it, okay.
Yep. And neighbor across the street at 23, I don't believe they needed a variance, but their backyard is kind of like my front yard. It bows out in the back, and they do have the same size shed, the same 12 by 16, I think it is, or the 192.
Okay. Thank you. That was all the questions that I had.
Excellent.
Before I ask any other board members if they have questions, I just remind the public that they can call with comments, questions at 340-8771, or via the website at penfield.org.
Oh, one more question, Dan, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
So, what will the shed contain?
What will the shed contain? When you stepped at my house, I think you saw my garage. It'll contain majority of that. So, like I said, we moved in last year, our previous house had a slightly larger garage, structuring a little bit more solid. It allowed for me to have storage above the garage, like allow some parkour cars in, and that's how I have storage above this garage. Until I am able to get in there and revamp a lot of the interior of that garage, I do not have the ability to store in the rafters in this one. So, I'll store that stuff, and I'll also store some my woodworking materials.
Thank you very much. No more questions.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the, I don't think that was a directive from Marie, I think that she was just speaking about herself.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, no other questions from the board. I don't see any call-in comments, and nothing through the website either. I think we've had sufficient time for that, so let's move to the vote.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Marie for a declaration of a type-two action under seeker, second by Andres. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and then I would also like to make a motion to approve the request for this variance. I don't believe that there will be any undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, you have a similar-looking shed right next door, as I recall. You have considered other places to put the shed that wouldn't require the variance, but due to your water drainage issues, I can see where you would want it there. And I appreciate the due diligence you took with your neighbors in making sure that they were comfortable with it, and it sounds like keeping that tree intact, in place, will actually improve the situation for the neighbor across the street, and he's okay with that. I don't see any negative impact to the neighborhood, even though this is a five-foot variance request. I think that it's okay and will be a nice addition.
Unless I'm mistaken, also, the request tonight is a reduced request from the initial application?
It is.
Yeah, so that was a significant move as well. Okay, great. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion to approve and a second?
Second.
Now, we have a second from Andres as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck.
So, I do have one question for you guys. Now that it's approved, how long do I have to put it in?
Too late, too late. One year for the building permit, is that right typically?
I submitted, I haven't paid yet, because I'm waiting for approval. That's what they told me, not to send any checks in?
Well, the price just doubled.
Right, wow. Okay.
Maybe you can, yeah, just call Andy, but I think it's a year from whenever the building permits issue.
Yeah, the permit's good for a year when we issue it. The zoning board approval, I don't know that there's any time limit on that.
No. Go by whatever the building permit rule is, but go ahead and call Andy.
Okay, excellent. Thanks so much, guys.
Wouldn't be a timeline on the approval and support based on condition that they have announced over here?
Right. Thanks, Pete. All right, good luck.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Application number three.
Theta Burnham, 2513 Penfield Road, Fairport, New York, 14450, requests area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second existing accessory building, whereas a minimum of one accessory building is allowed under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code. The property is owned by Theta Anne Burnham and is zoned RR-1, SBL number 140.02-1-30.21, application number 20Z-0022.
Good evening. My name's Tom Blank, and I represent Theta Burnham. She is available by telephone tonight if there is any desire to speak with her, or if anyone has any direct questions for her. My address is 13 Toby Brook, Pittsburgh, New York, 14534, and Theta's address is 2513 Penfield Road, Penfield, New York.
Tom, can I, Tom, can I interrupt you for a minute? I know you're an attorney, but I think it would be important to say that. That's the scope of your representation, so.
Understood. Thank you, Michael. The application is made, Theta has reached an agreement to acquire an irregular piece of property from the neighbors, the rectors, Lee and Melissa Rector, who are 2515 Penfield Road, and as you can see from the survey, by squaring off the two properties, the framed garage and old foundation will now... garage and old foundation will now become part of Theta Burnham's property, which then gives her two outbuildings, which is outside the code and would require the variance with respect to having the garage and the two outbuildings. She has the framed, she has the framed garage in front of, in front of the framed garage, and then there's the framed barn in the back of the property. And as you can see from the survey and the overview picture now in front of you, it squares off the lot and actually brings the setbacks with respect to those outbuildings, brings them actually more into conformance with the required setbacks. The existing garage and barn that is on Theta's property, those are pre-existing, non-conforming, and I think they are brought more into conformance with respect to this, or subsequent to the conveyance, which would square off the Rector property and the Burnham property.
Okay. You done, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Was the reason for this solely to square off the property, or was the, was it the reason to add the barn?
Interestingly enough, the rectors didn't even know that they owned that barn. They, Theta has kind of treated it, she's, for the last 20 years, as if it was hers. In fact, she just recently painted it. She also put a new roof on it a few years back.
Wow.
And, you know, when the rectors are getting prepared to sell their property, and when they, we've had the survey done, it was discovered that this irregular shaped piece. And in discussions between the rectors and Theta, they, you know, it was just one of those things where, okay, we thought you owned this, you know, and the rectors in selling off their piece, that wasn't going to add any value to the sale of their property. And Theta uses it to store boxes every now and then. I don't think there's anything in it right now, but she has stored boxes and odds and ends tools in there on various occasions.
Okay. So basically, they wanted to keep the use the way it has been?
Yeah, exactly.
Even in the future, if there's a change of ownership, which apparently it sounds like there's going to be, so. Okay, that makes sense. Are there going to be any physical changes to the property? I assume not, if she's using it right. No driveways are going to be added?
This is just a property line request.
Okay. And I think we actually have three outbuildings or accessory buildings instead of two. I think we got a garage and a barn already, and now we're adding the other.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Is your client aware of the prior approval that was made here by the town of Penfield in 1985 with reference to that barn?
Yes, she is. Yeah.
Okay. And there were certain limitations placed on the use of that barn?
Exactly.
Is your client willing to agree to add, to treat this barn similar to, as if it was in that agreement?
Yes, I think I said that in the application, that she would agree to the same conditions with respect to the, this framed garage, yes.
Same limitations as she had before?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
All right, and before I ask other board members if they have questions, once again, I'll remind members of the public that they can submit comments via phone at 585-340-8771, or electronically via the website, www.penfield.org. Right now, I don't see any calls, and I also do not see anything submitted to the website. So having said that, I'll ask if there are any other questions from board members?
No.
No.
Getting a no this way, Marie? Nope, you're good? All right.
For seeker?
Then let's move to seeker, yeah.
All right, for seeker purposes, I'm going to move that this is a type-two action, no further action?
And I will second that, because I wanted to break Andres's string of second-involvement seeker motions. So we have a motion to declare it a type-two action under seeker and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, Mike?
All right, with regard to the main body of the request, I'm going to move to approve both of them. The, we're not, and this happens a lot, we're changing property lines, we're not changing physical characteristics, we're adding anything to the property, so it really isn't going to change the character of the neighborhood to any degree at all. Basically, we're taking away one accessory building from 2515 and adding it to 2513, so, you know, it's awash there. The fact, as Tom Blank pointed out, that it brings the other two buildings into greater compliance is definitely a benefit that we get by this. And with regard to the variance, the barn that's being moved from 2513 to 2550 is a pre-existing, non-conforming use to begin with. It's still the same distance away from the west property line that it was before, so, I mean, there's nothing that's changed in that regard, so I think it's a number one until we do that as well.
Right. I'll second that, people, Andres does.
Okay, all good points, valid points. Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Nice to see you.
You too. Take care.
Good night.
Good night. Next application, please.
Jaclyn Holtzman, 95 Woodside Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request a conditional use permit under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.5-point C, point C1G, I'm sorry, of the code to allow a massage therapy business at 250-2509 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is owned by Rich Sam Properties, Inc., and is zoned business, not retail, SBL number 123.07-2-47.2, application number 20Z-0023.
I'm sorry, Andy, can you repeat that, please?
I don't think so.
Okay. Applicant, if we could have your name and address, and then go ahead and proceed with your, with your address to the board.
I'm Jackie Holtzman from 95 Woodside Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. And I recently moved my massage therapy business from 5 Mile Line Road to 2507 Browncroft Boulevard. So my mailing address is 2507 Browncroft Boulevard, but I think the whole property is under 2509 Browncroft, and Andy can explain that. I didn't know I had to go through the zoning board of appeals until I spoke with Andy, I think, the beginning of July, just to get my information changed with the time of entry because I was moving. And he informed me that I had to go through this board of appeals, so that's why I'm kind of late. I'm already moved in. However, there are typical businesses already in that building. The building is better for my clients. It's on a first floor, there are no stairs, parking is better, lighting in the parking lot is great. And so I'm just asking for approval to run my business there.
Okay, and once again, before board questions, I'll invite the public to provide any comments via phone, 340-8771, or electronically through the website, penfield.org.
Okay. Thank you. So I just have a few questions. This is a, for lack of a better word, I guess, a plaza, correct? There's multiple commercial buildings and businesses that use the space. Is that accurate?
It's not in a plaza. It's actually a separate office building. Behind federal, the advantage federal party union, there's three office buildings. And mine is the office building furthest back, so it's not in the plaza itself, which is off.
I can see that, yep. Okay. And is it just you that's going to be working there, or are you going to have some employees?
Just me. Just me and an office. So this office building has several offices in it, and there are several different businesses in there. And mine would just be one of the businesses in that building.
So it's fair to say, in your part of it, you only have one person at a time come in for services?
Yes.
And it appears that there's ample parking for you and your client and other people using that building and the offices, correct?
Correct.
What are your, what are your hours going to be?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. I have it, I had it in my letter of intent. 9:00 AM to 5:30 on Mondays, 9:00 AM to 4:00 on Tuesdays, and Thursdays are 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I think that she hit all of my other points in her presentation, so I have no further questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No.
No. All right. I don't see any comments via the website, nor any calls. So let's proceed with the seeker.
I'll make an application to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on seeker from Matt to declare it a type-two action, a second from Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
And I would move to approve the conditional use permit. It appears to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the district. It is not detrimental to the adjacent properties, and it is not detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons at or near it.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, we're ready, Andy. Number five.
Let's see if I can read this one better. Amy Bast, 1181 Bay Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow, in addition, with less front and side setback than required under section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, and less buffer than required under section 250-7.2-A of the code at 1181 Bay Road. The property is owned by Amy Bast and is zoned limited business, SBL number 093.11-1-45, application number 20Z-0024.
Okay. Go ahead, applicant. Identify yourself, give us your address, and proceed with your presentation.
Yes, hi. My name is Amy Bast. I'm looking for a variance for 1181 Bay Road, Webster, New York, 14580. And I'd like to add on to the back. I need additional storage. I have no basement, and I have nowhere to put anything, so I'm asking for 19 by 19, 360 square feet off the back, off the back left-hand corner.
Okay, so again, before we launch into questions, I'll remind the public that if they wish to comment, they can do so by calling 340-8771, or putting in a comment via the website, penfield.org. Ms. Bast, how long have you been operating at that location?
15 years, almost. Just under 15 years.
All right, and during those 15 years, have you experienced any problems with parking or with traffic issues, or anything with your, any issues with your neighbors?
We had a few issues years back with parking, but we've resolved those, and my neighbors are wonderful. And they actually both approved, you know, or said yes, you know, not a problem if you want to add on in the back. They have no problem with that. So I have more than enough parking at this point.
Okay, and you said that the addition would be used for storage. What are you going to store in there?
Well, especially now with COVID, I had to limit some of the cutting stations. I have to store some of the furniture. I have no place to put anything. And we're very limited to how many girls can work at one point or another, and I need to get some of the furniture out of here. We.
Okay.
Not to mention additional, you know, other things that I need to store in the future.
All right, and, go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, that's it. Thank you.
All right, and can you, can you see the screen that's up there? You're?
Yes.
The addition would be, that area there, I often get confused about directions. I try to look toward where the lake is, but the addition's going to be going the direction opposite from Bay Road?
Correct.
Right? So it's really, yeah, it's not going to inhibit any traffic views or cause any traffic issues on Bay Road. And can you describe for us what you have on each side of your building, the nature of the properties there?
If you're looking from the front of the building to the right-hand side, the owner, Paul Christopher, has rental property and a bit of land. And I just spoke with him, and he was, you know, part of this. To the left of me is the plaza that has, oh, the dry cleaners, the canned bottle place, the massage therapist, and that is Tommy Gibbons. And he is, he's actually a little farther away from me. We share an in-and-out driveway, so there's additional footage in between us, in between your buildings.
Okay, and I'm sorry, the property further north, let's say it's residential, but it's rental property?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Will the addition take away any parking spaces?
There's one and a half parking spaces that I will actually have it remounted out. I need to have it restructured anyways, and I can make up for the almost two additional parking spaces that I'm going to lose.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, very good. I don't see any call-ins, and I also don't see any comments submitted through the website. So given that, we'll proceed right to the seeker, and I will make a motion to declare this a type-two action under seeker, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a seeker motion made by me, seconded by Andres. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And then, as far as the merits of the application, I would make a motion to approve. I think it's a fairly straightforward addition to a property for a business that's been operating there for several years and doing a good job. I'm often in the area because I don't live far from there, and I know that the traffic flows pretty well there. The addition is, seems to be necessary, especially given the current pandemic circumstances. And I don't see any significant impact whatsoever for these variances on any of the neighbors. Andres asked a good question about parking spots, and that's being addressed as well. So my motion would be to approve it.
Thank you.
Second.
Well, we have to have a vote first, but you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, now you're welcome again. Good luck.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Application number six, moving right along, folks. Way to go. COVID, who? We're doing all right.
BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane, East Fairport, New York, 14580. On behalf of Penfield Wesley &amp; Church, request area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing church with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F10 of the code, and an existing accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1586 5 Mile Line Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield Wesley &amp; Church and is zoned RR-1-20, SBL number 109.03-1-10.1, application number 20Z-0025. Application number 20Z-0025.
Okay, do we have the applicant online? It looks like we do. If you can give us your name and address, and then proceed with your application, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Greg Bell, I'm with BME Associates, and I'm here representing Penfield Wesleyan Church for three area variances under a further subdivision application. The church currently owns the properties at 18th, or, I'm sorry, 1580 and 1586 Five Mile Line Road, and they received conditional planning board approval last Thursday to subdivide the property into two lots. The conditional approval requires the zoning board granting the three following area variances. The first one is a church side setback of 51 feet on Lot R2A where 100 feet is required. The second one is an accessory structure size of 782 square feet on Lot R2B where 415 square feet is required. And the third and final one is accessory structure, accessory building setback of 10.7 feet on Lot R2B where 50 feet is required. Thank you for your time, and I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you. Okay, and before we launch into those, for the, seems like the 20th time tonight, I'm going to remind members of the public that they can comment via phone 340-8771 or through the website, penfield.org. Thank you, Andres, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. Can you speak a little bit to how the property lines were devised in terms of, you know, the sizes? And then I guess in a sense, you know, that that size property that you're subdividing off allows a certain size accessory structure, and I guess how you chose that size and not larger?
Well, they chose the size, I'm assuming you're talking about for...
The residential.
Yeah, the residential. So we held the setbacks, 10-foot side setback on the north to the house, and then the 50-foot on the rear for the accessory structure. So that's how they, that's how we established the lot lines. And the church didn't want to give up, you know, they kind of wanted to keep the vet lot to a minimum, if you will.
Sure. And can you talk, was any conversations brought up about maybe demolishing the accessory structures, then it would be within compliance?
There was no discussion, but I mean, it would be, because what they're, what they want to do is they want to sell this, you know, eventually they're going to sell this, and that would be a desirable structure for somebody to buy it, so I would suspect that they would not want to demolish that.
Okay. And can you, I guess in a sense, talk a little bit about, you know, how's, you know, I guess I was looking more to the, between the church and the residential property, how that line was established?
That line was based off of the side setback for the residential house being 10 feet.
Okay, so then you're okay there, and that's how you established that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I also heard at the back of the property, was there talk of a trail had easement for the town as well?
Yes, that was another part of their condition, is that the church grants the town access easement.
Okay, and is there any issue with conditioning this variance on that?
No, in fact, I just heard today from the church that they got the, they got the necessary approval from the church members to grant that easement.
Okay. In a sense, if someone's looking at this from the street, are they going to see anything different by subdividing this into two parcels?
No.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Let me check. I don't see anything through the website, and I don't believe we have any call-ins as well. So let's proceed with the seeker.
Sure thing. So this requests a type-two action and not subject to further review? Second.
All right. Motion by Andres to declare it a type-two action, and a second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, go ahead, Andres.
Okay, I am going to make a motion to approve the application as presented. Really, I think it's very similar to the one that we heard earlier tonight on Penfield Road, where we aren't seeing, there's no differences. You know, we're, you know, lot lines are moving, no new structures are being built that are trying to be brought in into compliance. There's nothing that we're trying to, you know, squeeze onto the lots. If anything, I think it's more of a sign of the times that the church is having a building that they have on site that they really don't have a use for anymore, and it's probably actually more of a cost for them. So by dividing it off, I think it allows that, and actually also it brings another parcel into our tax base as well by doing so. But there's no adverse, you know, conditional, or there's no adverse effects on our local area, or the parcels, or the neighboring properties or neighborhood, and so with that?
And we got an easement too, so that's good. All right, we have a motion to approve by Andres, a second by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you, good luck.
All right, thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Last application, I believe.
BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane, East Fairport, New York, 14580. On behalf of Conifer Penfield Associates, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow greater building-mounted signage than permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, signage with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than permitted under Section 250-10.11-E of the code, and greater traffic control signage than permitted under Section 250-10.17 of the code at 2071 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Conifer Penfield Associates and is owned general business TFOD. SPL number 140.05-1-1.2/2160. Application number 20Z-0026.
Okay, go ahead applicant, please give us your name and address, and proceed with the application.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Cretico, I'm with BME Associates. I'm at 10 Lift Bridge Lane, East in Fairport, New York, 14450. Also here with me this evening is Fred Rinaldi. He's with Conifer Penfield Associates, and their address is 205 St. Paul Street, Rochester, New York. We're here this evening to request three variances, or allow all the uses for the signage out of the Starbucks in Parkside Commons Plaza right off 250. If you recall, we were here about three months ago, making 21st year CBA meeting for an area variance on the front setback. Similarly, at that meeting, you had another Starbucks application. They requested the same three variances that we're here this evening for. So at this point, we are requesting six building-mounted signage, as well as five ground-mounted signage out at the plaza. The building-mounted signage is still less than the total levels, square footage or signage at the building. And then the directional signages, we're looking at doing architectural Starbucks ones, they're greater than two square feet, which is the reason for that variance. And then the primary logos that are located on the building themselves are 100% logos, there's no actual Starbucks wording on there, so that's the other reason we're here for variance. We have kind of elected to do similarly to the other application that you guys approved all the variances for off Empire Boulevard and the Walmart Plaza. Because this is kind of an out parcel building in the Parkside Commons, we wanted to disperse the signage around all sides of the building, make sure it's visible to people on Route 250 as well as people internal to the plaza. And some of the directional signages we're proposing are really just to help direct patrons to the new drive-through and help them to get accustomed to the little bit of modifications that we're doing out in the plaza. We have provided all factors of consideration in our letter of intent, and we would be happy to continue to walk through any of the signages. We do have some videos as well as building elevations for the package, and there is a fly-on video of your call last time that does accurately show the signage in relation to the building massing itself.
Okay, again, briefly reminding folks, they can call in 340-8771 or submit comments, questions through the website, penfield.org.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. I want to say, I was a little bit surprised when I saw your application, only because we did this three months ago, two months ago, at Baytown, and basically had a situation there where the building was sitting behind a McDonald's and partially maybe screened by a bank, and there was much light made of that. And here we get an application that has yet another building-mounted sign in addition to what we already approved for the Baytown project. Here we have a building that sits in the front, it's open, it's about as open as any building around there, although there's other buildings to the left and right of it. And it's also has an access road both in the front, the side, and the back, which means that traffic is not flowing at a great rate, so people can see what's going on pretty much there. And as I said, the building's wide open. So I got, I guess my question is, why do you think you need signs on all faces of this building? I mean, in your application, you said, well, it's in a plaza, therefore you have to have all the sides covered. So, and you also referred to the fact that McDonald's and several buildings had multiple signs. So I went back and looked, and I found basically, there's, one, two, there's a Monroe Muffler, there's a medical building, and I can't remember what the third one is. There's three buildings there that have signs only, oh, and the ESL building, signs only in the front. You got, I'm sorry. Yeah, Valvoline ESL have signs only in the front, also the Medical Arts Building, which sits in back, or the medical building, has a sign in the front. Nobody has signs on the north or east face of any of the buildings that are freestanding in that plaza. So could you answer why you think you need all four covered, particularly the signs on the north and the west?
Yeah, just based on the kind of traffic patterns, you know, out there, you know, we really do want to make this new Starbucks visible to, you know, especially patrons traveling north and south along Route 250, just to again, direct them to the appropriate locations to get to the plaza, as well as, you know, again, not overburden one side of the building with an extensive, you know, signage that we would be allowed based on the code requirements. So we're allowed approximately 126 square feet of signage dispersed around the building between, you know, the couple Starbucks logos, the lettering on the rear side of the building, and then the drive-through signs. We're just shy of 110 square feet. So kind of as we reviewed this, you know, with the architecture in our team, we felt that this provides a very kind of sleek feel for the buildings. If you, you know, look at any of the elevations, none of the signs, signage on the sides feel overburdening or are very dramatic. It's really just meant to kind of help item the building that will be located here.
Okay, but what... James, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the top, I think it's very important. The buildings that were referenced as precedent that exist, the project had been there almost from the beginning. With the exception of the Blockbuster, the former Blockbuster building, we have split up and is now multi-tenanted.
Fred, we're losing you, in fact, you're... Hey Fred, let me interrupt you for a minute. We're losing you, you're freezing every once in a while. I wonder if you can try just getting rid of your video? There you go, I think that may help. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, is it any better?
So far, it's great, yeah.
Okay, and I apologize for that. What I was saying, and I'll be brief, the buildings that were referenced that exist in the plaza, most of them, which have been there in their current form since my father built and has been managing this, those buildings, none of which are hospitality, are largely serviced by appointment, and also have gone through several updates to their branding over the years. The block, the former Blockbuster building, which is now multi-tenanted, we did in fact pursue the right to have signage on the north elevation, which is not the, which is not considered the street elevation. And the medical building, which I'm very happy that was brought up, the medical building, we actually have plans to remodel and reprogram that building as it is no longer marketable and current as it relates to our ability to tenant. In fact, the, there's only one tenant left in that building. The other thing that's very important is that with the improvements to the medical building, and other improvements to the site, and updates to the tenants you make up, it is critical at the west elevation or the plaza elevation, as well as the north, south, and east elevation which faces 250, all of them have to service a almost front of house, meaning that we don't want there to be an implied rear, because we want there to be a nice sense of place for the portions that face the plaza, the same that face Valvoline and the medical building. The medical building, with our improvements that we will likely have in front of you this fall or early 2021, we would have had them in front of you earlier had this pandemic not happened, will be a little more modern, it'll include features that you see common with new developments that service a mix of tenants. It's most importantly, is we want to open it up to interfaces, more intimately with the plaza itself, and also adds some connectivity to the commercial portions that are just in the north of us there. Even with the location of the intersection at 250 and 441 so close, the speeds, as well as the orientation of our entry points, really warrant an application of the signage or trade dress as is proposed here. And I can tell you that there's, when we, in a proposal like this, where we actually had influence over the building architecture, and also have been managing and own this project for so long, it is, we eat, do everything we can to limit the amount of signage requested before it even hits the application formal it, that we're doing tonight, and we really feel that Starbucks accommodated a reduced plan that allows for a visibility that not only will ensure success there, but also be a kind of a bolt of energy, not only to our project, but this commercial corridor, which is, which is pretty awesome, the way that it's been growing over the last 12, 13, 14 years, and we hope it continues to do so. So the request tonight, which has a, which has less building-mounted signage than would naturally be allowed, is the, a lot of the signage that exists in proposal actually is specific to the directory portions. Am I coming clear? I'm sorry, I should have asked that.
Yes, actually, it's working well.
So the, so we're very, we're very excited about the way that this came together from an architectural standpoint. We're excited at the opportunity to have a tenant that has a building footprint that allows us to do the things I just described, which speaks to quite literally every face, every elevation of the building, even the Valvoline portion facing north. And everything that you see here is going to be complemented by some pretty spectacular landscaping, which we have continued to evolve our programming every season. Our property manager out there, Teresa, has really been doing an awesome job, and these little details, believe it or not, play a critical role in the success of these businesses. So as we watch you guys continue to improve the parks, and we've been very excited to see the adjustments to the tree screening, and we've got plans to do, or trail connectivities to Harris Wayland, and other things, this is just an opportunity for us to play kind of a fresh role in the community, and a great tenant to usher in to this corridor.
Who's controlling the screen now?
I am right now.
Can you, can you do that? Did you just do that walk-around? I just did it on my computer, I think that's...
Yeah, I can, let me do that.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't...
No, it's okay. No, it's okay.
It's always so many nice cars in those things.
Oh, yeah. Is everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Andy.
Sure.
Done?
Oh, yep.
Okay. I'd like somebody to, either one of you, to address the need for the drive-through signs on the front, on the two sides. One on the south side, one on the north side.
So those two signs are really just located there to help, again, direct traffic toward the new drive-through. Obviously, with us putting, installing that drive-through in there, we have changed the circulation patterns in the plaza a little bit. So we really just want to direct people appropriately to where those drive-throughs are located. That's part of the reason, too, for the few directional ground signs that Starbucks would typically require out there. So with that, you know, mainly helping people who are traveling northbound and southbound on Route 250, they can identify, you know, where that drive-through is going to be located, which side of the building they need to, you know, be directed to, especially since, you know, a lot of these people are going to need to make immediate movement once they enter into the plaza to get to that direction. So we're really just trying to minimize the confusion right off the start with, you know, the new tenants and new customers coming to this location, so they don't have to kind of meander their way through the plaza and try and figure out how to do background.
And James, correct me if I'm wrong, but the directional signage, the ground signage, was designed in concert with not only Bourbon Associates, but also the state or county DOP when we reviewed this in planning?
The county and state don't have any, didn't weigh in on the directional signs at all, but it was part of our internal review with Bourbon Associates, the traffic engineer who works with us on all of our projects.
All right. Talking, speaking of ground signs, why do you think you need two exit signs, one-way signs, basically? Exit-only, thank you. You got one on each side of the driveway there. Why both sides?
Right, so we wanted to place one on each side of the driveway there. Really just two reasons. One, we want to make sure that that sign is visible, since it is a exit-only, this isn't two-way traffic. It's the drive-through lane and the bypass. We want to make sure that everybody's stopping, there's a crosswalk there, we want to make sure that that intersection is controlled for anybody leaving the drive-through. As well as, we want to make sure that it's very clear, because on the backside of those signs are do-not-enter signs or double-faced. So we really want to make sure nobody accidentally turns into the lane again. We're really trying to just sign appropriately to prevent any sort of traffic conflicts from new patterns.
And you feel that those signs are necessary, and without them, and without the two building-mounted drive-through signs, people would have a tough time figuring out where the drive-through is?
We feel initially that there might be some challenges with it, just as, like I said, people get used to the new patterns. I'm sure over time, as people continue to utilize this, it wouldn't be as necessary. But at this point, they are part of the package that we, you know, propose here to really improve the plaza and make this business successful.
Well, we're also servicing a couple of unique traffic patterns. We have the easement and connectivity for the curb cut that's north of the plaza proper, which is just in front of the Dunkin' Donuts further down 250. So we've got, we have a 250 entrance into the Parkside Plaza that requires an immediate movement north if they're going to be entering that parking facility or the drive-through queue. We've also positioned and populated the parking just to cause the employees, you'll see that the new parking that's along, that's on the 250 side or the east side of that pasture lane, we have designed it specifically to house employees, and also the glass systems, the laser that runs the east elevation. The hope is that we add as many elements that help people safely make a decision whether they're going to go inside the facility to pick up their product or enter the drive-through. This is a plaza that has a very diverse, dynamic heritage, both in age and daytime and evening transfer. So these are, in our opinion, safety features. If it's deemed, I will testify this evening, that if it's deemed that either of those signs have become unnecessary, I'd be happy to remove them in the future. But as part of this design and proposal, we treat these ground directory signs as safety features.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
It's pretty thorough.
Marie? No? Okay. I don't see any call-in comments. Additionally, I don't see anything submitted via the website. And we've had sufficient time, I think, so let's move to the deliberations.
All right. For SIKR purposes, I move that this is an unlisted action and issue a negative declaration, no adverse environmental impacts.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Mike to declare this an unlisted action and further to issue a negative declaration under SIKR. Second by Andrus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
All right. With regard to, you want me to break this out? There's three different variances.
Sure.
Let me take the sign logos being 100%. I mean, I would move to approve those. We've approved them for the other, the Baytown signage, and they're a little bit different in dimensions, but not significantly. So for that reason, I would move to approve those, the two, actually, there's three logo signs. I'm not necessarily agreeing to three, but...
But, and any time that there's ultimately a logo sign, you approve the fact that it's going to be 100% logo?
Right.
Okay. I think that's a clear motion. I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
All right. With regard to the directional signs being larger, again, those are pretty much in line with what we've already approved for Baytown. I don't see that they're significantly in excess of what they need or in excess of size. So I would move to approve the five signs that are submitted, three at 3.2 square feet and two at 2.61 square feet.
I'll second.
Okay. So on that particular aspect of the application tonight, we have a motion to approve by Mike and a second. All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. With regard to the amount of additional signs, I would approve the logo sign in the front, the logo sign on the, no, just, hang on a second, please.
Yep.
The logo sign in the front and the logo sign on the south side, where the drive-through is. But not on the north. Which is, you know, facing the plaza proper.
No, the north is, north, south, 250.
I got north and west confused, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be west.
So, Mike, just so I'm understanding the...
Why don't...
Go ahead.
Let me give you my total thoughts. I think...
Yeah, yeah.
Again, I went through that plaza, you can see how long the buildings have been there, they've been there successfully, too.
Yeah.
Whether they're serviced or not serviced, there's nothing on the north side or the west side of any of those buildings. I don't see the need for the Starbucks on the west side, and I don't see the need for the drive-through signs, but I'd like to hear what the board members have to say on that particular. So we did approve some at Baytown. I'm not sure why, this is, again, this is an open project. The interior roads, I don't think, have people whizzing by, and if they miss a turn, it's pretty easy to find it and make up, I think.
So I've always been one that I've never liked to dictate which faces of the building. Like if we're gonna, you know, if you're gonna say this many, and it's gonna be minus one, I'd rather say that, and then say, if you deem that, you know, the one in the back is more important than the one on the 250 side, then so be it.
Yeah, I'm just dealing with, I guess, the need to identify the business, but you're right. I guess the applicant could best make that decision, so...
So then, restating your motion, Mike, it's to approve two of three requested?
Two logos, no Starbucks letter, no drive-through.
Okay. I'll second it. Vote on it.
Okay. Everybody have the sum and substance of the motion? Marie?
I do, thank you.
Okay. Matt? All right. So then, we have a motion by Mike on this last aspect of the application, and we have a second by Andrus. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Well? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
All right. So four to one against, then I can ask one of the other three that voted nay to make a motion. I'm assuming the nays were because you were more in favor of granting further signage. So somebody want to pipe up and say why? I'll just say very quickly, I do agree, even though I voted against the motion, I do agree with much of what Mike said about the differences between this location and the Baytown one. Having said that, I do think there is a need for additional signage here, just because it's an internal flow, just not as much as was requested. So I want to give Mike the support for the reasons about the comparison to Baytown, but I'll listen to somebody else, if somebody else wants to make a motion.
I mean, I actually, you know, I mean, to me, the biggest thing that I liked was I liked that fly-around, I think, made a big difference in the impact that you saw. Like a lot of times when people ask for a lot of signs, it's much, it's for big signs or a lot to wrap a full bit. Like these are, I mean, to me, these are, you know, they're not big. I think, you know, they're within their square, you know, they're within the square footage.
Barely, but true, yeah.
But, you know, they're within, a lot of times, we get extra signs, and so they want more square footage, and they want more square footage for additional, you know, signs that are freestanding and things like that. And they're not asking for any freestanding signs here, and that's one of the things that, you know, I always look at, you know, are they asking for monument signs as well? And there aren't any here.
So let me ask you this. I agree that, by the way, that looks very nice.
Yeah, and there's no question, I agree with that.
No question about that. That walk-around was a very useful tool. So I don't think there's any issue there. The question is, Andrus, do you see, do you see a need for the request for the additional signage, as opposed to the fact that it looks nice? Because with this property owner, I think he's right, everything that we've seen submitted from him is, it's always high-quality, and it looks good.
Well, the way I heard Mike's was just two logos.
Right.
So there's no word Starbucks, which I think it needs, I think they want, you know, like for me, I'd want to see the word Starbucks in two logos. That's kind of where I was...
Okay.
At least along the lines, that's kind of where I'd like to see it.
And let the applicant choose whichever two.
And let them choose the sides, yeah. And that's kind of where I was going with that.
All right. So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Motion is to allow the one, the lettering Starbucks on that particular facade?
That's not my design, so I don't...
Okay. And then, two of the logo signs? So again, giving them the choice about where the Starbucks would be.
Right. But I would think the one to the, you know, the one with the gray...
Could you repeat that? I'm just, people are talking over one another.
I'm in favor of the two Starbucks logos and the lettering.
And then they would choose?
Yeah.
Board, am I allowed to make one last comment on this topic?
Yeah, just hold on one second. Fred, hold on one second. I want to see if any other board members have a comment on Andrus's motion. If not, we can...
You know, I could live with that. Basically, that was what I was trying to ask for before I made my motion, so...
Oh.
Yeah. Well, that's what I thought you were going with it, yeah.
Yeah, nobody...
Yeah.
I just sort of walked a little...
No, okay. Fair enough. That's good. Okay, go ahead, Fred.
And I appreciate the opportunity. The, I express this only because I do believe it to be critical. When Starbucks is part of a plaza, whether open-air, street, or mall even, every surrounding tenant then references their domicile position by virtue of where that Starbucks is located. Valvoline will reference it, Monroe Muffler will reference it, but more importantly, the tenants of the strip plaza, of which we have some pretty cool new ones coming in and some existing ones growing, organic growth is one of the most proud things that we have in this category of real estate. Every one of those tenant categories and genres relies on a brand as strong as Starbucks. That little mobile disc or the written letter which we have facing the plaza, it is something that will encourage and give faith to the business owners that are in the strip plaza, and it'll give great leverage, both competitive and in my ability to maintain these tenants here. And please, please consider the following: just because they've been there for as long as they have doesn't imply a certain level of health. Fred, my father and I are very close to every tenant in that plaza, and we do things that not many developers do to make sure that they're there with us for a very long time. And it is through that worker relationship that we've had this apprehensive success there. Every elevation signage that we're requesting tonight is so important. The spoke, the letters written out, the west elevation, the logo discs on the other three, they play such a significant role in not only in Starbucks's success, and by the way, this is their new 30-year store footprint, which we're very proud. This will be, this is actually different, this will be an evolved program even from what you'll see at Baytown and the interior. But each one of these four signs are so, so, so important. So I beg your consideration in allowing me to prove that that is fact, and I can promise you that having had this tenant at several of my projects, in some of whom they've been very good to me, and some of whom they've hurt me, this one included, if you remember. Everything that we're asking for tonight has great value for this application.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Any further discussion? All right. So again, we have Andrus's motion, basically, to approve everything except reduce the one, the request for logos from three to two.
And the drive-through.
And eliminate the drive-through.
Yeah, the drive-through, I was kind of impartial on, but yeah, it's one of those things, that's fine, that stands the way, Mike.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. So now, we have a second on Andrus's motion. Any further discussion? Okay. If I haven't mentioned it, we don't have any call-ins or anything through the website. All right. All those in favor of Andrus's motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I said aye in my head.
Okay. All right. Well, so not 100% applicant, but pretty close, and thank you very much for the participation.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Okay. I think we are, good night now.
Thank you.
I think that was the last application. So, once again, to everybody, fantastic job with this mode for the meeting, doing a pretty good job over these last several months. So thank you for all your efforts, and have a good night. See you next month.
Good night, thank you. Good night, thank you.